Attention, very much. Agenda questions, so please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you were asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you were here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you were here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. We have a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Kozmorski, second by Ms. Silva.
Evelyn Slavra, forty-three, then the head place. My question relates to item seventeen K. I went to the town council meeting last week and I spoke to them regarding the traffic light for the exit at the JK Mawa High School. And Mayor John Roth said that the cost for the traffic light was going to be seventy thousand dollars plus Boswell Engineering of approximately twelve thousand dollars for a total of eighty-two thousand dollars. He said he was going to be speaking to Dr. Schoen regarding the cost and splitting it fifty percent with the schools budget and their budget. He assured me that they have enough money in their budget to take care of the traffic light and I wanted to know if the forty-one thousand dollars is included in the budget to take care of the traffic light.
I'll be reporting about the traffic light in my report.
Okay, great. He also said that if they approve it on the next town council agenda, that it should be completed by August fifteenth, they would be putting out the bid. That's not going to happen?
Not likely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other agenda questions this evening? May I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Ms. Conoco, second by Mr. Coffey. Dr. Schoen, do you have a report for us this evening?
I don't have a report, but I have wonderful staff members that we want to acknowledge. It is absolutely positively wonderful to see all of you here and to see all of you here for the purposes of acknowledging your colleagues, which the videos and hopefully our comments will help to do as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Fair to introduce our first staff highlight.
Hi, everyone. So tonight, we have our spring staff highlights that will be presented to you today. The purpose of our highlights, a lot of us are here for support. So a big piece of it is to really showcase and celebrate six of our staff members' work. And the other piece is to kind of familiarize our community with some of our staff members. You know them inside the classroom walls, but you'll learn there are interesting tidbits about each of you that we're going to be sharing as well. And as we watch the videos this evening, what was so awesome is that we don't go in with really a planned conversation. It's kind of organic and we see where it goes. So I speak with the staff members, we speak with our colleagues, we speak to students, and what happens is, very organically, a theme reveals itself. So we're really excited to honor and celebrate six of you. We're starting with Betsy Ross. You can cheer. Is that a picture of Marcy? Wow. All right, so our first staff highlight is Marcy Pestrich. Marcy, can you stand up? You're not shy. Marcy is the definition of positivity. She always has a smile on her face and can cheer you up with just a few simple words. She is always helping students and teachers, showing them that they can accomplish anything. Every family and child that Marcy works with is lucky to have such a dedicated and genuine person as their teacher. Marcy is enthusiastic about teaching and learning with her primary focus on the whole child. She is always praising our children and so proud of their accomplishments, showcasing their brilliant ideas and talents any chance that she has. Marcy is considered a cheerleader for all students and irreplaceable to the staff of Betsy Ross School.
So this is my eighteenth year in Mawa at Betsy Ross School. Same classroom, don't tell anyone. I started September two thousand and one in second grade. And my first couple of years, it was first grade, second grade, first, but mostly I would say the past eleven or so years in a row had been first grade. And ironically, this year, I'm back in second. And I've always loved working with children. I've always loved working with the little ones. So I feel like from the time I was a kid, I knew I wanted to be a teacher.
Marcy Pestrich is, in one word, heart. She loves everything about children, everything about teaching, and she wants to bring every day her best foot forward. Marcy, she's everything to those kids and those kids love her. And she works really, really hard to make it perfect for them.
I had the privilege of working with Marcy both in second grade and then also just as a colleague from first grade and second grade together. And I never met somebody who's more dedicated in her profession than Marcy. Everything she does, she gives a hundred and twenty percent, a hundred and fifty percent. She's always looking to do the right thing for kids, and I think that's what makes her who she is.
Her kindness, her compassion, and her warmth is some of the most amazing things about her. She just exudes that always. So when you're in her presence, you feel that. And when you even talk to her, she cares so much about you and she looks at you and you know that she cares about you.
Though EJ has had Ms. Pestrich, Marcy, for the past two years, and we love her. As his mom, what I love is that my son has just loved on all day long for who he is. And so we've seen so much growth in EJ because of Marcy, who she is as a teacher, how she just loves on her students, how she embraces them, but how she pours into teaching her love of reading and learning as well. So we've had a very positive experience having EJ in our classroom these last two years.
She makes us feel amazing. It's just nice to be around her. When I was going to my seat on Christiana, she had to tell me something and she said, "You'll never make the eighth grade." And that seems to be true.
She says, "Yeah, I feel what she is and how she is, how she feels and how she's like, how she talks and..."
And how she responds to us.
It's so important for these kids to come to school and feel happy and safe and comfortable and confident and good about themselves. And then I feel all that learning takes place, that of course, the reading, the math, well, the academics is important, but I feel like before any of that can happen, these kids have to feel comfortable and safe and happy, and then they can take risks and all that can occur.
Marcy is so deserving of this acknowledgement because she pours her everything into her students. She's constantly in contact with us as the parents to share what's going on, whether it's Twitter, email, note that comes home. So when EJ comes home with homework and I have no idea how to do it, I've been provided with the information on how to help him succeed at home as well. And she just embraces it fully. I mean, she's fully in what she's doing, one hundred percent.
And I think that the kids, Lauren and I have said, the kids always come back to see her, no matter what grade they're in. Those in college come back to see her. And that says a lot about me as a person, when you remember a teacher that vividly, that you just feel we want to be, we want to be like her, you want to just, the kids, you want them to remember you the same way they remember her.
Yes, I feel like she's inspired a lot of people too, who've even gone into teaching or just feeling like they wanted to make a difference or be a better person in the world.
On the last day of school, I always sit with my class because we're a family. So I always sit with them on the last day of school in a circle and we reflect and everyone goes around what they've learned, what they've enjoyed about the year. And I always leave them with a couple of thoughts before they walk out the door for summer vacation, that if you've learned anything this year, always remember how important it is to be kind to yourself and to others and to always treat people with respect. You would want to be treated, you know, as you go through the rest of your years in school and college and working. Work hard, you know, always try your best, don't give up, but have a little fun too.
Marcy came to me the one day, she always kind of debriefs with me too. After like the day, she want to, she want to give me, you know, just to let you know, this happened or this happened. So she comes in and she says, "Listen, do you know what Dad is?" And I'm like, "Uh, tell me the story." So she's like, "Okay, so we're doing phonics and D-A-V, da, ah, right, Dad." All of a sudden, all the kids are doing this. So she's like, "I don't know what they were doing." And they explained to her, "It was Pestrich, it was stabbing, Dad, da, ah, da, dabbing." And they all did this the whole time. Hysterical. She didn't know what was happening. She thought her kids were going to take off and fly.
Very welcome. Video, chocolate, picture. Dennis is going to hug you, it's all good.
Thank you. I just want to thank so much Dr. Schoen, Mr. Fair for this honor and recognition. I feel so blessed to have my family here tonight and my Betsy friends who are family. Thank you so much for celebrating with me tonight. And as I said in the video, I just feel so lucky and blessed to be working in this district for the past eighteen years. The kids are amazing, the parents are so supportive, the teachers are so dedicated and caring and wonderful, just wonderful people to be with every day. And I thank the wonderful administration that we have, Linda, the boards, thank you to everyone. This means so much to me. Thank you.
Are you sure? Are you positive? Okay. Christine Petraskey, you need to stand up. You are the next person to be. Christine Petraskey has been a valuable member of the George Washington School staff for eighteen years. During her time at GW, Christine has taught kindergarten, first grade, and third grade. Currently, Christine teaches third grade, where she's created an environment where high expectations are always met due to her love, support, and dedication to all of her students. Christine has a unique ability to unlock each child's potential and help them fulfill their hopes and dreams. Her ability to push students to succeed is matched by her continued drive and determination to push herself to be the best teacher possible. Christine's work ethic, genuine care for her students and colleagues, and attention to detail make her the exceptional teacher that she is. The Mawa School community is honored to have Christine as part of their team and grateful for her willingness to ensure that all of our students flourish.
Okay, so I grew up in Ramsey and had a first grade teacher named Ruth Rajam, and she is the reason I ultimately became a teacher. I feel like she had the perfect balance of funny and sarcasm and just made teaching fun, and I knew that she loved her job, and that's one of the reasons why I ultimately became a teacher.
Christine teaches third grade and obviously with our district having a really unique structure with the K and three schools, all of the primary schools make a real effort to make sure their students are prepared when they go onto JK. And I think what Christine does, certainly above getting them prepared, is to make sure that every student is really confident in themselves and believes in themselves. So when they step out of GW, they go and they leave here with such a sense of accomplishment and feelings of self-worth that there's nothing but success in the future.
I think one of the philosophies that drives me as a teacher is that fair isn't equal and that every student in my classroom in September is like a new investigation and I need to discover how they learn best and I need to give them that. And what's good for one student might be completely different for somebody else, and I feel like that's what's worked for me and my students, and that's kind of how I succeed in third grade.
Yeah, I think that might be one of her best gifts as a teacher is that she truly sees the potential in every child. Whenever we think of lesson plan, she's like, "Okay, so how are we going to make this fun? How are we going to get the kids engaged?"
When I'm in Mrs. Petraskey's class, I feel happy as law. She helps us understand a lot of things in math and she's very nice.
Christine as a person and as a teacher is super detail-oriented, and I think if you're in her classroom and you see her lessons, you certainly see that piece of her because the lessons are planned so thoughtfully and so well that each experienced student has is really something that's unique and special and really meaningful.
I would say something that just says Christine is, no matter how any lesson goes or anything, you can always walk into her room and her kids are trying and striving for the best, you know, not only for themselves but also for her too. So that just kind of like gives you motivation to be better also.
I have so many favorite memories from George Washington with the staff, with the students, but one of my favorite ones was when Mrs. Chiana Palakis and I were, you know, fresh out of college, first and second year teachers. We decided, we had to teach the rank board to our first graders, and we decided that we were going to go above and beyond what we really needed to do. And the whole hallway, the whole wing by our classrooms, we decided we were going to make it into a rank board. So paper floor to ceiling, trees across the ceiling, students made animals, and wrote up little explanations of what each layer of the rank board was. And it was just a really good first example of the ways that we work together here and have fun doing it.
Well, her classroom is the best classroom in the whole school. I mean, it's decorated better than my house.
Your charts are beautiful.
Yeah, charts are amazing. I walk in, I'm like, "Oh my gosh, they're so neat, they're organized, and they're beautiful." And her anchor charts are beautiful.
They're good.
And her room is like coordinated, it's a whole ocean theme, and you walk in and you feel like, ah, like I feel like maybe that's why she did it. With all the kids calm and have a nice environment to go into.
There's some good punchway in there.
One of the things that really impresses me about Christine is her ability to get the most from her students. And I think she does that by really having high expectations for them, but also supporting them in a way that they really maximize their potential.
Aside from a mom, because that takes up the rest of my time, well, I am happiest, and this might shock some people but not others, when I'm in a flower shop. It's something, I love flowers, I love plants, I love gardening and landscaping and just finding the perfect place where things will thrive. That's something I really enjoy. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it, and I'm just very humbled by all of this and all the kind things that were said on the video. I love coming to work every day and I'm so happy to be spending my career here in Mawa. Thank you.
It was a nice classroom. It actually looked better in person than it did in the pictures. Yes. So our next staff highlight is Ally Bauer. Ally is the type of educator that you hope every child will have at least once throughout their educational career. There are many words to describe Ally, but the ones that truly describe her passion in the classroom are inspiring, kind, loving, dedicated, and funny. Ally is attentive to the learning styles of all of her students in her classroom, and she works tirelessly to make sure that they are receiving instruction that will allow them to grow. When you watch Ally teach, she is calm and engaging. Her students seem to hang on to her every word. She integrates humor and motivating moments into all of her lessons, and it is these moments that make her students laugh and love to be in her classroom.
I grew up around it. My mom was a teacher, my aunt's a teacher, my cousins are teachers, so I kind of was immersed in it growing up. I was able to see like firsthand the impact that mom parents had on their students. And I think, you know, as I got older, I wanted to try something different and do something different than my family. So I tried it and I thought that's what I wanted to do, but then, once I was in the classroom and started working with kids, I realized this is what I want to do. And I think their influence on me helped shape the teacher that I am today.
Ally is wonderful. Ally is the kind of teacher that, when you walk in one moment, she's hysterical and has the kids engaged and laughing, but yet she does it all on a calm demeanor. She's poised, she talks to the students in the calmest voice that you've ever heard in a classroom, and she holds her engagement through everything. One of the best things is Ally gets them to challenge themselves. No matter what they're working on, they always say, "Well, I have to do this for Ms. Bauer, I have to do this for Ms. Bauer." She wants me to be the best I can be. And it's nice when you hear that from the student.
Ally's quiet and she's a quiet storm and rises to every occasion in her classroom with her students. She has a very calm demeanor that is exuded amongst her students. They love Mrs. Bauer, and I think they, if you speak to any of her students, they will definitely have a lot to say about their relationship with her.
Mrs. Bauer makes me feel happy and excited. Uh, Mrs. Bauer makes me feel happy. Of course, there at school, she let us, um, we didn't have to do math. She makes me feel happy, excited, and because every day when we come back from lunch, we get to lay on the rug and she reads us a book. And sometimes really good books. Sometimes more substantial.
A really rewarding experience. I feel like she has a lot to offer and she's always willing to share. I think she has a really big heart. I think that when it comes to her students, she will go above and beyond and work till midnight at home to make sure that they have what they need. She really tries to make her lessons fun and exciting because the kids are so young. And I think a lot of times that, you know, there's so much for us to worry about, but she makes sure that they come first all the time.
I would say that Ally makes learning fun. Those kids don't even realize they're learning because everything is just kind of, I think a lot of times that they're excited about every lesson plan.
I guess my approach is, I find out what they need to know, I look at the curriculum, the standards and all that, and then I do my best to make it relevant to them and to make it engaging and fun. And I want them to want to keep learning and come to school every day and want to come to school on the weekends and to miss coming to school on the holidays. I guess that's where I'm coming from, and what I'm still like, that little learning early on.
Because Bauer does something that she calls a spotlight writing, where the students are able to come up to the board and they are the person to talk about their writing. And they're very excited. She enables all of the other students to identify, what did this writer do well? And the students really, really appreciate being showcased by her, and they enjoy being showcased to their class.
The kids come back to lunch, just to give you one example, and they lay on the carpet silent, and she pretends that no one's in the room and she can't find them. So she calls out all of their names, "I can't find you, where are you?" And then all of a sudden, she'll run to the rug and she tickles each and every one of them by their feet, and she's like, "I found Lila, I found Mateo, I found you all, my friends, I love you all." Now let's get started to work. And yet, everyone's on the carpet and engaged. So it's that calm demeanor with that overwhelming presence of just a love for her students.
I work with Joan Zmorski, she and I work together, and we were working with this little boy who was struggling with reading. He was having a hard time grasping it. And then all of a sudden, it just started to click for him. He jumped like two levels, and I looked at him and I said, "Oh my goodness, look at this, look what you could do." And I put a post-it on him that said, "I am a level whatever it was reader." And I said, "No, go tell Mrs. Zmorski." And he walked across the room, he tapped her on the shoulder and he said, "Look at me." And she looked at him and I couldn't have like planned her reaction even better. She was cheering and shouting and tears in her eyes and put stickers all over him. And he was like the proudest little guy I've seen. And it was just a great moment. It like kind of reaffirms why we do what we do.
Where'd Ally go? Oh, she's hiding.
I'm truly humbled and honored and reselected among such a strong and talented group of educators, and I can't tell you how much this means to you. So thank you.
Where would Mr. Hayek be? Stand up, Mr. Hayek, wave to your... Mr. Hayek is a phenomenal teacher. In speaking to Mr. Hayek's colleagues, he is viewed as a teacher that any parent would want their children to have. He is caring, thoughtful, and attentive to children and their needs. Further, Don takes the time to ensure that students not only learn the content, but just as importantly, enjoy their learning experiences. Students feel comfortable taking risks and trying their best in Mr. Hayek's classroom. He creates all of his own materials to ensure that all of his students' needs are met and is known, and on many days to stay after school to help his students get caught up. Don is really one of a kind, and he will truly be missed by all. We are excited for Don's new endeavors and very happy as he enters into retirement after the school.
I ran into an ex-student, he's gotten thirty-five years old now, a guy, Sumitai. I went to say hello, shake his hand, and he put me in his bear hug and he wouldn't let me go. You know, so I said, "All right, you know, that pretty much says it all. This is a kid from years ago, he remembers who I am." Obviously, he's hopefully had some kind of impact on me. For me, teaching is about creativity, it's very much a creative outlet for me. Really love to put a lesson together, write as creative as I can, and then watch it work.
Well, Don is great because he's here all the time. He stays late, he's here early, he's really just here for the kids. I think he really enjoys being with the kids and does a lot for them. And I think it sometimes goes unrecognized because he's quiet and not necessarily showy, but after work, five, six o'clock, I'm here making copies and preparing classes, just getting ready for the next day, which is a little...
Don is just all like my staff, all staff, all students. The great thing about Don is, as Ashley said, that he's here after school, he's helping kids out, and you see him at the end of the day actually walking those kids in parents' cars, and you see him coming back, and at that time, the majority of the building's in Don's.
I feel like this is my twenty-fourth year, and he's been here since I've been here, so he's been here longer. Don is always inspiring. We live on the math team. I have been on the team with him the entire twenty-fourth. I have been on the team with him the entire time that I have been here. He has the most creative ways of teaching kids that no one here doesn't get to.
We used to do a whole documentary on the Revolutionary War. We put school and filmed this thing. We had scripts and props and whatnot. Apparently, there's still a group of kids that got to 30 something. You know, they get to get a record once in a while to watch.
About Don, he's an energy builder. He's into the classroom. He moves about the room in such a way that captivates his audience. The students are engaged all the time. Fourth grade mathematics and science can be challenging and scary and difficult at times. He presents the material in such a way that's fun, non-threatening, and enjoyable for the kids to learn. And I think that's what we're going to remember about Don.
He gives us stuff that other, that other fourth grade classes don't do, and then he just makes them easier just by doing fun stuff, basically.
With everyday math, it's hard to explain. Like, it's really not easy as Mr. Hayek's lessons. He breaks it up and also does fun activities in the middle of it. So like, you understand it. Like, I didn't really understand math, but then he helps me like do better in math in the fourth grade now.
I also think that he's a very big advocate for students. One of them that comes to me right now is if we had a student who transferred in after the holiday, right away, Don came to me, "I assessed them with this. I did this." He's like, "He could use support with this. Can we put him in this flex class? Can we put him in this tutoring class? I'm going to stay with him after school. What else can we do?" And that's something that not everybody does. Right away, with Don, jumped the gun, took the initiative, and it really helps me out. One, knowing that all of my children are in good hands. And two, just knowing that I have somebody else that's, you know, thinking for anything that's happening to those students.
For me, it's real simple. I think like a nine-year-old. Sure, past that. So when I sit and think of how I'm going to present the lesson, I think of, you know, how would I have done it as a nine-year-old, what would make me even understand this and really relate to it? Luckily, you know, I'm still kind of on that mental plane, so it comes very easy to me. But, you know, the philosophy is just to get them comfortable with it as possible and have a little fun and go from there. I'm really missing the classroom. I think it's compassion, it's kindness. But we'll always get to see him on stage playing his guitar and singing Led Zeppelin. A couple bands at any given time, and I like to play in little clubs around and have a good time. That's been really my replacement for Xanax is music. So it's a lot of fun there. And some people may know I have a passion for trash paper. I've paid more than one, I ain't no idiot, years in the beginning of teaching. I've gotten through more than one mortgage payment on somebody else's stuff that they threw to the curb. It's eBay, garage sales, or Craigslist. So I don't know if everybody knows that. So I got a good trash center on my truck. I can trash it, or a rusty light truck in the back.
Dumpster done.
Yeah, that's me.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you. Can you show off your tie, too?
Yes, this is like the coolest tie ever.
If I may, I know I've made this announcement once before, but I think last year's fourth grade class, on the last day, my granddaughter was there. The entire, the entire class cried. Anyway, he's sorely waiting for his last station.
Give me stars.
She's not Jessica.
I just want to say thank... First of all, I want to register a complaint. The actor, too old, too fat. But I mean, that really speaks to, like, I still feel like I'm the 27-year-old kid that started here. It all went very fast, and that, you know, that's because of everybody that I get to work with every day. The people I get to work with, teachers, are the best people in the world. Thank you to you all. Dennis, I'm going to tell you why I'm not giving you a four.
All flapped. I see Lori Breitman.
You gave me four questions. You only asked me like one and a half of them, and then you hit me with some stuff that blindsided me. But thank you again. I, again, I too am humbled. The people that I work with, I am amazed by them every single day. And to be honored like this is just amazing to me and humbling. So thank you.
Our next staff highlight is Rich Gordon. Rich, give me a...
Mr. Gordon has taught in the mathematics department for 22 years. Courses have included Algebra I, Grade Seven, Algebra I, Grade Eight, Eighth Grade Mathematics, Remedial Mathematics, and Money Matters. At The Ridge, Rich coached soccer, basketball, and track. At MHS, Mr. Gordon has served as girls' and boys' JV tennis coach for eight years. The following attributes have been used to describe Rich by colleagues and administrators: approachable, personable, polite, fair, and thoughtful. Mr. Gordon possesses strong content knowledge and creates strong, positive relationships with students and colleagues. Rich makes an effort to get to know colleagues on a personal level and makes connections far beyond the Ridge walls. He also focuses on the whole child and is sure to express interest in students' lives beyond his classroom.
So I'm Rich Gordon. I've been working here for 22 years. I've been teaching eighth grade math the entire time, and I've been coaching here the entire 22 years. This will actually be my 42nd coaching season in this district, which is crazy to think about. So I took a roundabout route into teaching. I graduated Rutgers with an environmental economics degree and didn't know what I wanted to do with it. So while I was still living in my parents' house, they said, "You got to make some money." And I went into substitute teaching, and I realized I was good at it. So I went back and got my math degree, and went back and got my certification to teach. And that was 23 years ago.
The greatest thing that I like about Rich is his demeanor as a person. He's just a really likable person. So my interactions with Rich would be similar to a student's interaction with him, and he's just such a personable guy. He makes a lot of connections. He knows all of his kids. He knows what they like, their personalities, where they're strong, where they're weak. He makes those connections, and he's a genuine person.
He makes the connections with every kid in the classroom and shows a genuine interest in all of the kids. He has the ability to do that, and, you know, he's big into playing the guitar and playing music. So we have the music kids, and then the sports kids, and then the theater kids. And he just makes it a point to connect with each and every one of them.
The best way to describe Rich is that he's a quiet, steady coach or mentor. And I think he serves that role whether he's working with a colleague or with students.
He's our rock. He's our pillar. Anyone has any problems, they go right to Rich. Whether you are a new teacher, he's automatically your mentor. Whether you've been here for a while, everybody goes to him with everything. So I know he has a great relationship with students as well. Our strong learners, spends time with them, right, after school, during lunch, has so much patience.
He is a very good listener and does offer, especially in the math department, when there's so much, there's been so much change. He offers a great perspective to ground us to come back to what it really, you know, what we should be doing in the classroom, which is really connecting with kids.
Uh, Mr. Gordon, like, he just makes the class better, like, like he explains the stuff very well, and he makes it fun, like, not like some other teachers.
He's a whole class of like 20-some, and he definitely makes you feel like more than everyone else. But he makes that feel of everyone, so everyone feels included. And he really like just focuses on you and trying to get you the best student as he can, as well as like being like in the future. And he's like, not even so just math, but so like everything, so like skills, like they'll need in the future. And he's like a really smart guy and super nice.
One of Rich's most notable and memorable qualities is the fact that he can make relationships with all students. And those students really, truly, genuinely like him, even though he's teaching them math. And he has taught all levels of learners in math. And he has always come away every year with saying, "That was a great class," you know? And I love those students. And it's the same thing with his tennis teams as well. He always speaks of that in my, like, their record list.
It was my first year teaching. We had an assembly here. It was called the Roots of Rock. And it was a band that got up on stage, and they played music and talked about the history of the United States and through music and through socioeconomics and politics. But they were done early, and at the time, the vice principal here, Mr. Van Eck, said, "Does anyone want to come up on stage and entertain the audience? This is in front of 300 people." And the kids around me all started chanting my name. And Mr. Van Eck at the time knew I played guitar, so he gave me the guitar of the guy in the band. And again, I don't know what to do, and I start asking the audience, "Does anyone know any songs that I might know?" And at the time, Bob Parker, oh, it was a phys ed teacher here, came up on stage, and we figured out that we knew a song together called "Friend of the Devil, My Grateful Dead." I started to do it, throw it, and he was singing it, and I was playing it. And then all of a sudden, I hear the drummer from the band join in and start playing. Then the bass player started playing. Then the guitar player took out another guitar, plugged it, and now I'm fronting the entire band. 300 people. We played through the whole song, get a standing ovation. I remember that moment like it was yesterday. It's like, this is a rare job where you could be a rock star without actually being a rock star.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is a really, really, really special night. You know, I spent a lot of hours here between teaching and coaching and my union activities. I really have to thank my wife, who's crying right now. And my two sons, Ben is here, Max is late at a tennis match. But, you know, they had, both had to learn at an early age that when they hear me referring to my kids in conversation, it didn't mean them. So again, thank you all. You know, I'm so lucky that I have a job that I don't consider work.
Okay, the second Mr. Gordon, would you please stand up? Adorning the bulletin board in the hallway outside of the woodshop are a dozen or so pictures of smiling students from years past posing with their completed woodshop projects. Some pictures are of tables, some are chairs, and there's even a guitar or two nestled on that collage as well. These pictures represent a small sample of the hundreds of students who were lucky enough to have Mr. Gordon as their teacher. Whether teaching about the dovetail joinery, the art of marquetry, or encouraging his students to see the beauty of the everyday, Mr. Gordon's passion for fine craftsmanship is embodied in the work that his students produce. Perhaps most importantly, Mr. Gordon's students always leave his class with a sense of personal accomplishment in having turned simple planks of wood into pieces that carry such a profound, personal investment. Those of us who have had the privilege of working with Mr. Gordon know that his knowledge, quick wit, kindness, and unwavering patience are a model of what all teachers should strive to be. We also wish Dan sincere happiness in his retirement.
People are usually interested that you're a teacher, and then they're really fascinated when you teach shop. And everybody has a story about shop class, which is interesting. You know, I never pictured myself a shop teacher. But the thing I love about teaching, it's that, and I've tried to convey this to Dennis Jarvis, and in the classroom, when you let go and the kids are completely on task, they're focused, and they seem to be getting some joy out of what they're doing, that's, that's an amazing thing about teaching that doesn't really get talked about a lot. And it's, because it's very non, you can't quantify it.
I think, talking about the art show, you know, every year I try to get Dan to display his art in this building so people don't have to walk over to the building to see it. And inevitably, he convinces me that it's important for parents to see the work in the context of the woodshop. And so, you know, we go through this labor of getting lights and making sure that can happen for him. I think he's really proud of the space he works in and really proud of the work that students do. And really, the furniture that kids are making is really top-quality work that kids are working on.
It's really awesome.
Yeah, it really is.
Being in Mr. Gordon's class is probably one of my favorite periods, to be honest, because it's just, he's always so friendly to everyone. It's, he's never in a bad mood. I've never seen him in a bad mood. And whenever you need help, he's always there. He's always there to just, like, to the simplest things, to the hardest things. And I know as a student, that's always the best. And I know he's got a lot of students in my class, so he's always bouncing around. He's always helping, always helping.
He always makes you laugh. He always cheers you up. Very sarcastic, like...
Yeah, he's probably one of the most patient people I've ever met in my life. To see him work with kids is, is a, it really, it's kind of, it's magical because he can turn on, off, move from different kids in a heartbeat. You know, kids who are more self-directed and the kids who need a lot of help, and he does it. It just, it's flawless. It's seamless. It really is.
But, but that's what you're after, and, and, you know, I, I, we joke that I, you know, I talk in the circle, but I always get to my point, so my students, you know, they come close to that. But, but I know that, I know what it means to be on task. I know, I know what the objective is. And I think the, probably one of the best qualities I have that makes me, you know, an effective teacher, and I'm sure my colleagues would feel so, is patience. I, I know what needs to happen. Sometimes I can get to it quicker than others. Sometimes I do it more efficiently than others. But I know that if I'm patient and I'm tenacious, that when I let go or circumstances force me to let go, then it's going to go to a, you know, dare I say, a magical place.
When I think about Dan Gordon, I think about how kind he is. Yet, he's, he's able to manage lots of projects at the same time without ever getting clustered. He's the consummate professional. I think, too, that he's just such a happy person that he spreads that around wherever he goes. And he's also the kind of person that no matter what task you ask him to do, he's up for it. Whether, you know, he's doing a duty early morning or a study hall or there's just something else that needs to be done in the school, he's willing to step in and do it. And it always strikes me as, you know, he's a hands-on kind of craftsman, and yet he's willing to take on something like a study hall, which is so different in nature than what he's used to. On a personal level, I also find that Dan is the go-to person when you need to be soothing or calm down. He's very zen, and that's because he does practice a lot of meditation before he comes to work. He is really impressive in terms of his own artwork, that he's always wanting to learn new things. And outside of this building, he's a painter, he's a printmaker. He builds all his own tools. He shows his work professionally. And he's just always kind of striving to be a creative person.
He has so much knowledge on other pieces around working with, like, the trees that come from art planks and stuff, and how they're all cut and how they're all shaped. And that's something that I always found so interesting is that just besides working with wood, you know what comes from it and where you got it and what people did before you even got the wood.
It just like brings out your personality when you make something that you like and that you're passionate about.
So I know that many of the kids won't necessarily be cavity makers or furniture makers, but I want them to connect to what it feels like to make something, to put a piece of themselves into it, to have a respect for what it means to craft something and the skill set that goes with that. And then, most of all, when I've thought about this through the years, ultimately, what I'm looking for as a teacher is for... I'm looking for as a teacher is for them to walk out more confident.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
What, no flowers?
Brilliant editing, by the way. I do, I do talk in circles, so that was amazing, amazing bit of editing to get, to get it to sound.
Forty-nine minutes.
Right, so, yeah, yeah. God bless you, first thing in the morning. Right. And my, and that's why the students always want to get into the shop. So my lessons are, you know, always succinct, very, very focused. My family's here. I actually live down in Union County, in Burpee Heights, so I've, I've had a very distinct career here as a teacher in that I've, I've kind of lived in two worlds. I have my world at home and my world here. And my kids' growth has sort of mirrored the, the, the growth of my students. And we just had Bring Your Child Back, Bring Your Child to Work Day, where my stu, my own, my own kids would come and actually spend time with the students. And it sort of epitomized my experience here in Mawa. And I, I didn't set out to be a teacher, I sort of fell into it. But I, you know, by, by having that connection with my, my own family and the family that I've built here, that's really what I'm saying, I have two families. It's been an amazing experience. And then, from a professional standpoint, to be included in the group that I've been included with is, is truly an honor. I am retiring this year. I'm retiring not, not to, not to go, you know, no picker competition. And unfortunately, I can't play an instrument, but I, but I paint. So I guess, I guess the teaching thing brings out creativity, so I'm, I'm pursuing the painting side of things. And, but that, that said, I, this is a, a quick chance to say thank you. Thank you to the board. We do have an amazing program. We have a, a program that's, I think, unparalleled in so many ways. We have an incredible facility, as you know, we're adding to that facility. I have to, John Pascal became principal six months before I, I came onto the scene. Hopefully, you'll survive without me, John, when I leave the scene. But, but I say that because John's been instrumental in helping build the program, as have all of you and, and the administration. And we really have an amazing thing here, which I know is just one piece of a, of a mosaic, if you will, of, of so many amazing resources. And so, and most of all, so many wonderful people. And a shout out to my, my supervisor, Dennis Jarvis, as well. I've had, I've always been relegated to the sciences, so you've had to, had to have a lot of patience to, to supervise me. But it's been, it's been a wonderful run. I want to keep as many relationships going as was really well said. I stay in touch with my alumni and, and hopefully, so many of you as well through the years. I can't thank you enough.
So, Madam President, that does conclude our staff highlights for this evening. I know that many of you are here for the sole purpose of honoring your colleagues. Please, you are certainly welcome to go if you're not interested in a budget presentation.
They want to be fed, so.
Congratulations, everyone. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you all so much.
Thank you. Sit down, Mike. Sit down, Mike. Okay, Mr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Thank you.
Yes, Agenda 1118A. Is the announcement of retirement? Yes, this, this is Gary, who's a business teacher at the high school. This is Gary, who served as a student, a high school business teacher for nineteen years. Sorry, Cindy. Sorry, Cindy. They might have to pick you up.
And thank you, everyone. If you could, if you're leaving, if you could leave as quietly as you can, we have to continue with the meeting. But thank you all for coming. Congratulations to all the recipients. Okay, Mr. Fair, if you'd like to continue with your report for us, thank you.
Absolutely. So, Agenda 1118A, we have the announcement of retirement. This is Gary at the high school. She's served the Mawa Public Schools students and a high school business teacher for nineteen years. In those nineteen years, Cindy has been a fierce advocate for all students. She forged strong relationships with students, parents, and support staff. In her role, Mrs. Gary has reflected on instructional strategies to improve the educational experience for all students. The future business leaders of America also benefit from her expertise and guidance. Take Your Child to Work Day, which Mr. Gordon referenced earlier, through Cindy's efforts, has built key moments for the building together, inclusive of staff, their children, and students to create lifelong memories. Most importantly, Mrs. Gary cares deeply for her colleagues, her students, and her role as a mentor. Her presence in our community will be truly missed, and we wish Cindy the best in her retirement. Also, we're continuing the hiring season. All of our vacancies, we're hoping to have filled at our May twenty-second agenda, but we recognize that, you know, when things come along the way, there will be more additions. And also, our end-of-year barbecue is scheduled for June twenty-fourth. We have a barbecue district committee that is inclusive of one staff member from each of our buildings. We've been meeting, and we are ready to celebrate as we get into our downswing of the school year. And that's my report.
Thank you. If the board could certainly put that in your calendars, it would be awesome. That's the twenty-fourth. I anticipate we'll probably start the barbecue, I'll say about twelve, twelve-thirty. I know we're starting, what do you think?
Maybe a little earlier.
Maybe a little bit earlier, so if you guys will all kind of be in place as far as setup is concerned, perhaps by eleven.
It's my thirtieth anniversary. Couldn't imagine a better place to be.
Right. And I hope I don't see your wife when you tell her that you're home here.
She knows where she's at.
It's now on video.
I can't back. As long as we don't pay for the dance.
It's a lot of wow.
Even of itself, isn't it?
It's a lot of fun.
It's a lot of fun. It really is. Looking forward to it, especially days from the truck. And it's coming.
It sure is.
Mr. Bleecker, you have a report for us?
Okay. Yes, good evening. I have a few things to report on this evening. A bunch of presentations, so it's going to be the final summary as well as the budget hearing. I have an update to give to the board and the public regarding the steam edition. But first, there are some troops from Girl Scout Troop 95829 that want to speak to the Board of Education about a proposed path they want to help re-bigrate behind JK.
Great.
So please come up and speak some more.
You can hold it like a rock star and watch.
Just don't drop it to you.
Hi, do you know Troop 95829, a good day for a master? My name is Cameron.
My name is Nicole.
My name is Hope McCrimmels.
My name is Ishikaraka.
My name is Nicole Vatuz.
My name is video for the truck.
We are doing a bronze award project. The bronze award is the highest award you can earn at a junior level. It requires fifteen hours of planning and community service of a project that we decide.
As our bronze award, we would like to create a path that, that students in Joyceville Elementary School could use to, as an easier pathway to the library for after-school hours.
We're doing it because people can get hurt, and there are branches that could fall, and we want to be, make, keep the kids safe for good reasons and causes.
We all are working really hard to make this happen, including three hours of service in the forest and picking up trash and helping out with, like, making stones and stuff. And we would really appreciate that.
There you go.
Um, we also want to do it because when it's like rain or snowy, it gets icy and wet, and it's easy to fall down, and no mom loves dirty kids.
Um, um, to conclude, well, not to conclude, but I just want to say thank you to Ms. Colleen and Ms. Christine for letting us do this for Joyceville right before the future kids are going to come.
Well, I've got to say, your preparation for this tonight, and the way you organized yourself, and the way you gave us this message was, was excellent. Seeing you guys is, is absolutely the best. If I may, we have discussed this idea with the facilities committee. I anticipate that we will have an answer to you by tomorrow, which Mr. Bleecker will be able to deliver. Is that okay? So we'll be in touch with you or whoever was in touch with us with the request. We'll get to you tomorrow. We just want to confirm that we're in the right place.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job. Great job. I promise not to break up this time. On behalf of the trustees of the Mawa Public Library, we want to thank you. Your project of renovating that walkway will go a long way to complement the, the goals of, of developing lifetime readers and lifetime library users, and we thank you for that.
Great job.
Yes, that was one item. Next item I have for this evening is an update regarding the steam edition. The steam edition is currently entering the final stage of construction. The contractor at any time has multiple trade, tradesmen and women working simultaneously in both the interior and exterior of the building. Heading on the interior has begun. Windows and doors are scheduled for delivery this week.
Sorry.
And preparations for the parking lots continue. Roofing has been installed and the finishing work for that roof is ongoing. HVAC units are in place and are being connected. Rough electrical and plumbing is done and finished work with, will begin after the paint is completed. Case work for the roofs are on site and furniture has been ordered. An unforeseen condition related to primary electric was addressed and will help to improve the ability for future work, whether at the steam edition or in other areas of the high school. However, there has been a handful of delays in other areas that will cause the date for substantial completion, which was originally scheduled for May thirty-first, to be adjusted. At this time, the date of substantial completion is projected to be on or about June twenty-first. The district contractor, construction manager are all working to shore that delay as much as possible where we can. And then the last thing I have is the budget presentation. Okay, thanks very much. Tonight is the last budget presentation for the 2019-2020 budgets. The budget was first presented at our first meeting in March. It was our preliminary budget, we sent down to the county offices for their review. Came back from them with only a handful of minor requests for further information, which we provided, and subsequently was approved at the county level for presentation here to everybody this evening. This is going to be a summary presentation. Everything that I am presenting tonight, with the exception of one item, which I will highlight, has already been spoken about in one of our other board meetings. All these presentations are available online. The last thing that we need to do, another item that will be online shortly, is a user-friendly version of this budget. We are required by the state to post that online within forty-eight hours of this evening. There we go. As I said, one of the first meetings, the overall budget has several components to fund it. The first component is the tax levy of just over sixty-five million, as for both the operating and the debt service part. We have state aid that we're receiving in excess of three million. Transfer from emergency reserve, this is the one item that is a, a new item from the preliminary budget that was presented to the county. This is a transfer that has been discussed that we are going to withdraw from our emergency reserve account. Emergency reserve account is an account that we have for use for unforeseen circumstances. There's adjustment to the state law a couple of years ago that allows us also to withdraw funds from that for reasons to address any security-related items at our schools. That's what this withdrawal is going to be for. It's going to be for, to address some security items at all six of our schools next year during the nineteen-twenty school year. Any funds that we do not use from that money will go back to the emergency reserve. Going down line, we have other revenues of even over $200,000 of fund balance. There's funds from other, other budget years that are being carried forward. And we have our special revenue of just over $718,000. The grand total budget for the nineteen-twenty school year will be $72,078,170. The impact, I should note as well, that transferred, the new one, that there is no tax impact. That's all with funds that we already have internally in our reserve account. Therefore, this information is the same as it was when I previously presented it. The tax, which is determined based on the net valuation of the township, as well as the value of a home in Mawa. On the bottom, you can see that for the 2019 school year, for every $100,000 of value of a home, the increase will be approximately $17,000 from the 2018 year, for a total of $1,113TE. And then just below that, for homeless value, that $500,000, that's what the increase in tax impact would be for 2019. Staffing, again, addressed at a previous meeting, the rationale and the approach that we take for staffing. We are anticipating for the nineteen-twenty year a net decrease of .7FTE. The total budget for salaries is just over $35 million, or about forty-nine percent of the budget. Employee benefits, another very significant area of the budget, is slated to be a limit over $11 million. This has our health benefits, workman's comp is in there, social security, pension payments, tuition reimbursements, and other benefits for employees. We have a special revenue fund, which is part of the budget. This is referred to as Fund Twenty. Federal, state, and local funds that we have that are designated for a specific purpose are included within this fund. There's a total budget there of just over $700,000. And lastly, is debt service. Debt service is a separate fund of the budget that is specific for repayment of principal and interest payments from bonds that the township had previously presented to the public and were approved. The two bonds that we currently have outstanding, one is from 2002, it was the original bond for the building of Lineupu Mental School. And then we have a bond that was originally presented to the public in 2003. That was for renovations at the high school in Rainbow Ridge. For the nineteen-twenty school year, the budget for the principal and interest payments that are scheduled is just under $1.6 million. And important to note that these bonds will be expiring within the next several years, one in the 2022-23 school year and another in the 23-24 school year. As I said, this is the last presentation for the nineteen-twenty budget. The next couple of steps is to present this, my apologies, to give this to the town clerk. She has to assign off on the tax levy. We also have to send this down to the county level, and as I said, post it appropriately on our budget, on our website. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Dennis. Thank you.
Yeah, but Dennis did a nice job.
Say it again. Say it again, Dennis. Say it again. 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 The total budget for salaries is just over thirty-five million dollars, or about forty-nine percent of the budget. Employee benefits, another very significant area of the budget, is slated to be a limit of over eleven million dollars. This has our health benefits, workman's comp is in there, social security, pension payments, tuition reimbursements, and other benefits for employees. We have a special revenue fund, which is part of the budget. This is referred to as Fund Twenty. Federal, state, and local funds that we have that are designated for a specific purpose are included within this fund. There's a total budget there of just over seven hundred thousand dollars. And lastly is debt service. Debt service is a separate fund of the budget that is specific for repayment of principal and interest payments from bonds that the township had previously presented to the public and were approved. The two bonds that we currently have outstanding, one is from two thousand two. It was the original bond for the building of Lineupum Elementary School. And then we have a bond that was originally presented to the public in two thousand three. That was for renovations at the high school in Red Bull Ridge. For the nineteen twenty school year, the budget for the principal and interest payments that are scheduled is just under one point six million dollars. And important to note that these bonds will be expiring within the next several years, one in the twenty twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year and another in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As I said, this is the last presentation for the nineteen twenty budget. The next couple of steps is to present this, my apologies, to give this to the town clerk. She has to assign off on the tax levy. We also have to send this down to the county level and, as I said, post it appropriately on our budget, on our website. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Good job, Dennis. Thank you.
It's kind of like the phone ringing in the middle. It's okay.
Okay, President's Report. This evening, I'm happy to announce that eight Mawa High School students have been accepted into the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty All-State choruses. They are juniors Sophia Garvin, Olivia Leto, Aaron Lockwood, Dante Mejia, Aiden Mossman, and Rebecca Solomon. And freshman Paige Leloya and Adya Mohanti. Soprano, Olivia Leto has had the best score for the state the second year in a row. And Paige will be singing with the All-State Treble Chorus at NJ PAC next February. And the rest of them will be singing with the All-State Mixed Chorus in Atlantic City and NJ PAC in November. So let's all congratulate them when you see them and give them a round of applause. That's all that I have for this evening. Do we have any board committee reports tonight? Yes, Dr. Morthee?
I unfortunately was not able to attend the last instructional and curriculum meeting, so I'm going to give a few minutes to Dr. Dettoro because he wanted to share something on behalf of the committee.
We meet as 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 a group on a monthly basis and we talk about the many things that we do here in Mawa. Something that we highlighted at the last instructional meeting was the new encore offerings at the middle school. Now, just to give you a frame of reference of what they are, these are classes that students take outside of the core time. That really expose them to very unique experiences that really develop their interest and understanding in things outside of reading, writing, and math. But obviously, reading, writing, math are embedded in those experiences as well. So we, this has been a two-year process. This is something that has been handed over to the new administration, the new administration with Mr. Corey. And the supervisors did a wonderful job with going out and researching programs all around our county and outside, within our state. And they brought back some really exciting ideas. Within those ideas, they were able to maintain some of the 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 core elements of the encore program, whether it was art and the languages. But they wanted to also start to look to see how they can create a pathway for, no pun intended, up into the high school to create those, that consistency of program. Some of the things, I'll just highlight them. I'm not going to go chapter and verse of every single course. But some of the things that we, they focused on and created, they created a steam experience for all of our students, sixth through eighth, that really built upon each other, sixth through eighth grade, that started with coding, built onto robotics, and then went into a Tinkercad type of program, which is really an engineering design type of experience that the kids could come together and build, which is really, really exciting. Outside of that, they they built a program, well, they built a program that focused on image, sound, and story. Where they got a chance to use their analytical eye and watch how different directors created experiences through through movie, through pictures. And they get a chance to interpret and comprehend and develop from there. Another piece, another experience that they had was they they tried to create creative names. It was called DigiApp. And the DigiApp course was a, we're trying to create educated consumers of our digital media experience. Obviously, we're all immersed in that world, and we want to give those students a firm understanding of quality and integrity as they go through and they do their searches and they do their traveling through that world. We also have a strong component of humanities as well. So something that we're extremely proud of, that Nikki Van Ness, Van Ness and her team worked on, is called Project Citizen. And this is a great opportunity for our students to take a look at the world as a whole, analyze what are some problems that are out there, come together and start to create solutions and possible other ways to get to to a better place. And that's another way to get our students to collaborate, think together, and present, which is also a key element of building our middle school students to go up into the high school. So we're extremely excited about this program, these programs. At instructional, I think it was about a forty-five minute presentation. I'm trying to compress it out of respect for everybody here. But also give it its due because the administrative team at the Ridge, inclusive of everybody, teachers, supervisors, and building-based administrators did a tremendous amount of work. And it's a great way for us to showcase some exciting things that we can build some some thinkers and and some learners and some producers, more importantly, as they go up into the high school. So I just wanted to showcase that.
Thanks very much.
It was one of the most exciting instructional meetings I've ever been to, and the interdisciplinary approach that was taken was was outstanding. And it reflected in the diversity of the programs that were chosen for the in in the Ridge. But again, it just goes back to the depth of our staff, the depth of resources our students have, and
I'm sorry to have missed it. I mean, it was like the cream of the crop meeting.
It was really awesome.
Oh, I apologize. Anyway, thank you, Mike.
Any other board of course?
So seventeen U for Policy Committee. We have twenty-one policies and regulations up for first reading. We continue to wade through the two thousand series. We'll be back at it tomorrow morning, eight o'clock right in early, continuing that, you know, that march.
Thank you very much.
As we're going through that, we we came up with a bunch of new tech technology policies and regulations that needed to kind of cut the line, just so that we can, you know, have in place for our one-to-one initiative next year. A bunch of them are just updates to code recitations. There are really nothing big there, and one new policy for service channels.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Community relations about this evening. I'm sorry, did I jump on you? No. And we've identified sixteen sites where the members of the committee are going to be present to hand out informational material, educational material to the general public at, for example, concerts and things like that. We're going to be available to answer any questions that are going to go up. We also, and I heard that they'll be done with the building by the twenty-first of June. One of the ideas we had was giving a tour to especially elementary teachers who really have not been close to this, of the new facility at the picnic. As they come in, since they have to park over here, they have to come this way. We can sort of give them, hopefully, if we're allowed to, give them a tour of the
That's a great idea, and and I think you're right about the elementary teachers not having as much exposure to the building, but it's the twenty-first of of June. And at that point, it's substantial completion, so I'd like to kind of wait and see where I'm at at this point, just in case they're off by a few days and then we promise something that perhaps we won't be able to deliver. But I think that would be a great idea.
Dennis will pay the overtime out of his own pocket, he says.
Yes, and there's always, we have those two first day of school staff days.
Awesome. Mr. Yallow?
I have remarks and then two reports. Just a remark on the budget. I want to thank Kyle and his staff and all the district leaders who contributed to the development of the budget. It's important to remember that the budget maintains all the district's core programs, including staff development, extracurricular and athletic programs. It provides resources for initiatives that support the rollout of the steam building, allows for modest program enhancements throughout the district, and most importantly, funds the implementation of the one-to-one initiative. And we did that all within the budget cap. Second item, which is the traffic safety project at Mawa High School, is since early two thousand eighteen, the Finance and Facilities Committee has been working with the township to address this longstanding safety issue. At our last board meeting, I reported that a working group consisting of the township engineer, a traffic engineer from Boswell Engineering, the Mawa Police, John Pascal, Mr. McFerrin, Kyle, and the Finance and Facilities Committee met to answer all the open questions that were raised by the council last fall when Boswell made the presentation for the project then. At the Township Council meeting on April eleventh, the mayor reported that he supported the project and that he would reach out to Lorne for a cost sharing arrangement. He did so, and he offered essentially a fifty-fifty cost sharing proposal. So the district's contribution to the traffic light would be just a little bit over forty thousand dollars. Subsequently, at the Township Council meeting on April twenty-fifth, by straw poll, the council also expressed its support for the project. The next steps are for the Township Attorney to prepare a sure and services agreement, which the council and the board will also have to approve. So at some point, we're going to be asked to give support to this arrangement. And I believe if there's no objections, I believe that there would be support for this project among the board. The Finance and Facilities Committee, I think unanimously supports this project, and we encourage your support. Once funding is in place, Boswell completed detailed design and bid specification. In anticipation of the light, the Mawa High School leadership is working with the traffic engineer from Boswell to design changes to the Mawa High School front parking lot that will maximize the value of the traffic light. The cost of this portion of the project will be borne strictly by the district. At our April tenth meeting with the working group, we expressed our hope that the traffic light and the lot parking lot reconfiguration could be completed in conjunction with the opening of the steam building and the start of school. When we laid out the rough timeline, even assuming we could expedite all of the things that need to get done, it really looked like the project would come to fruition probably in October, but it could bleed out to early November, to be realistic. I especially want to thank the mayor, the council president, and members of the council, the township engineer, Boswell's traffic engineer, the Mawa Police Chief and his staff, and all the district staff and the Finance and Facility Committee members who contributed to advancing this project. Kyle or I will be providing updates over the course of the summer as the project moves forward. And not to step the lead story to the last, but I'm making a report on behalf of Andy Vitale, the president of the Mawa Education Association, and on behalf of the Negotiations Committee regarding the status of negotiations. On Monday, April twenty-ninth, this past Monday, the MEA and board negotiating teams reached a tentative agreement on a four-year contract. We met ten times over the past few months discussing a broad range of issues, well beyond the scope of simply wages and benefits. The agreement addresses many longstanding concerns of mutual interest to the MEA and the board. The next steps to finalize the contract are that the entire package will be submitted to board and MEA attorneys. They'll do a review. The MEA will do its presentation to their membership and secure a ratification vote. The contract will come back to the board for final approval, hopefully towards the end of June. It is our hope and wish that, and we will work very hard, both the MEA and the district will work hard to make sure that we have a new contract in place on July one. There are many positive elements in the tentative agreement, and I won't go into detail now because we're slightly ahead of the curve. We'll talk about that towards the end of June when we actually have the resolution before us. I do want to note that the negotiations process was extremely constructive, collegial, and respectful. The Negotiations Committee will provide updates as appropriate, and I want to thank everyone who dedicated their time and energy to get this to where we are today. At our June meeting, I'll give a longer list because there were really a whole bunch of folks that made that worked very hard to make this happen, and they all deserve recognition. That's my report.
Thank you very much.
Can I take a question about the traffic, Claire? Am I just to assume that it's at where the turns are or you're, that's a determination?
If you have the JK entrance.
At the JK entrance. Thank you.
I just have a report on Mawa. Schools Foundation just reminded everyone that the Thunderbird Run is May nineteenth. And that the end-of-the-year meeting will be held at the Mawa Bar and Grill at seven P.M. on June third. And I'll be reiterating that through our other board meetings up until June third, just to remind everybody. Sort of a meet and greet for new people and the end of the year for the trustees. And I just want to just say happy birthday to Mr. Yallow.
Okay, do we have any board member remarks or additional comments on any of the reports or non-agenda items?
I have two things. I wanted to congratulate that Girl Scout troop that got up here to speak in front of us. To the leaders and to the girls, every single one of you guys put together a great project that all the kids from JK will be able to benefit from. But I also want to thank the JK HSO. From the notes that we received, they're going to be committing to maintaining that that path. For all of us who have been on HSOs, who have volunteered over the years, to make that commitment is very significant. Volunteers are very hard to get these days, so for the JK, for JK to say, hey, we're going to, we're going to commit to do this, that's a, that's a huge commitment on their part. Also want to congratulate the Mawa High School baseball team. They were ranked number one in New Jersey dot com rankings recently. I think they have a thirteen and one record.
Well, twelve and one is
Twelve and one, I'll give them an extra one. But congratulations to the whole coaching staff and all the players.
Great, thank you.
There are two things coming up that I wanted to make everyone aware of. The high school art show is coming up six thirty to nine thirty P.M. on May seventeenth and twelve to three on May eighteenth. And that's when you see just fabulous, fabulous work by all our students. It's incredible what they turn out, so everyone should really see it. Then in addition, on May twenty-second at Brady's, the senior graduation gala is going to be doing their final fundraiser. And that's for the safe night after graduation. We raise money to send the kids off to an unknown destination. We have a live band performing at Brady's, and it's from seven to ten P.M., and it'd be great for everyone to come out.
It happens to be right after our board meeting, so Leslie and I will be expecting full attendance. So mark it now.
Thank you very much.
We just meet at Brady's.
Once again, speaking in behalf of the board, I want to thank, show much appreciation to our administration, our staff, our students, and parents in this district. U.S. News and Report came out with its ranking, annual ranking for today, and in in New Jersey, there are three hundred and fifty high schools. Mawa was ranked thirty-ninth. And in the U.S. level, in the U.S. level, there were two twenty thousand five hundred high schools. We were ranked eight hundred and forty-seven. So guys, guys have really done a great job, and thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, old business. We have a motion to move on old business. Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Mr. Yallow. Any comments on old business? Okay, can you take the call, please?
Yes. Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sutone.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Yallow.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Abstain.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
And Ms. Farron?
Yes. And I'd like to take the new business seventeen A through Y. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Dr. Morthee. Do you have any comments, questions on any of those items, any board members? All good to go? The call calls.
Mr. Wenderkowitz? I will abstain on seventeen A, check number oh nine four seven seven. And I will vote present on seventeen O. Ms. Sutone?
Yes, on everything, but I am abstaining on seventeen A, check number zero nine four seven eight zero.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Yallow?
Yes, but I will be abstaining on check number in seventeen A, check number zero nine four seven four zero. I'm not alone this time.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, I'm going to add to that list of checks. I'm going to abstain to check number zero nine four seven six eight.
Okay. Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
And Ms. Farron?
Yes. I'd like to take new business A through M, M. May I have a motion to proceed? Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Any comments on any of those agenda items? Board members?
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sutone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Yallow?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
And Ms. Farron?
Yes.
Now, public questions or comments? Note, this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Yallow, seconded by Mr. De Silva.
Good evening.
This is the only time in my life I've had to raise my microphone yet. I've always wanted to follow the Girl Scouts.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I don't have any prepared remarks.
How about your name?
Oh, Megan Charles, Ten Skies, Top Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for, you know, letting public comment for us to come. I haven't spoken to to Ann as of recent in the last week to find out any updates. I haven't spoken to Anne as of recent, in the last week, to find out any updates on, I'm here to talk about the playground. There are many parents that are interested and concerned. You may not see all of them here tonight, but a lot of them are like me and have little kids at home and, you know, with dinners and everything, and, you know, I have my four-year-old, and he's sitting on the couch, we're reading a book about sharks, and now I'm here, and it's because that same four-year-old this week had his hands in the playground of the stuff at GW. And I brought him to my car at the end, you know, I'm not going to be like the crazy screaming parent on the side, like, don't touch it! So, I'm letting them play, right? The whole while, just kind of gritting my teeth and having a smile, and then came back to the car and just wiping, calmly wiping their hands off, and it's black. So, I just started thinking about communities and schools, and I know that how important it is for stakeholder input. So, here we are, again, offering some input because we, as parents, are stakeholders in this community. So, what I'm asking is, last time, there was one of the parents that asked if there happened to be a committee just for playgrounds, and I know there isn't as of yet, but what I'm here asking is, could there be? Because last time, we were talking about there's, you know, so-and-so has research, this person has research, you know, you all said that you have a lot of research, and that's great, but maybe we could have a committee where we can just sit, not in a public forum, where we don't have to come and, at night, and we, you know? Let's have a committee where we could sit as stakeholders and look at the different research that's here, so that, I mean, frankly, I decided to stand up because I looked at the budget, and I saw final whatever, May first, and I thought, well, I hope there's some of that money for the playground! So, that's why I had to stand up. Thank you, and I'm asking if we could have a committee.
It would certainly not be an answer that we would give you.
Okay, no, I know you obviously have to confer, but...
Well, we do, and you want, you want an answer, that's why I'm looking at you, because it's something that requires a discussion.
Right, of course.
What I can tell you is, is that you're referring to a committee that includes parents, I guess.
Yes.
We do run by committees, right? So, we do have the facilities committee.
No, of course, yes, I understand.
That works together and makes a recommendation. In regard to research, we have both Rowan and Con, I can assure you, on both sides. Thank you very much to Mrs. Pally, who's given me a great deal of that research that has been out there, but we do have a lot, but I will absolutely confer with the Facilities Committee to see if they are interested in moving forward with a parent being part of a playground committee.
That would be wonderful, and thank you very much. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Megan.
Okay, Evelyn Slavka, forty-third, ten head place. Okay, so, I guess my questions are from Mike regarding the traffic light, and so, the parking lot for the high school, the improvements to that, what timeframe will that be in?
We looked at a preliminary design earlier this evening.
Okay, so, will...
The critical timeline right now is to get the agreement with the township in place, and then money will be in place then for the engineers to do their design and bid, their bid package.
Okay, I guess I just want a little bit clearer understanding of why it's going to go until October or November, when John Roth had told me that if they were able to approve it at the next town council meeting, it could be completed, the traffic light could be completed by the fifteenth of August, but, or if you pushed it out, it would be the end of August, because they would be putting out the bids. So, I just want a clarification.
Unfortunately, the mayor was not able to attend our working group meeting on the tenth. He sent his representatives, and when we talked about all of the steps that need to be taken, even on an expedited basis, including the lead time for the, you know, after you get through the bid, the lead time for the materials, awarding the contract, getting the construction done, that's what it looked like to the, I'm talking the engineers, this is not us, this is Boswell basically sort of running through all the steps.
Okay, so, when school starts in September, will there still be construction on the high school parking lot?
We hope to finish that over the summer.
Okay, thank you. Jen Park, six divine joy. Actually, I don't have a question, I have a public thank you for eighteen W for making the library media specialist an increase from point eight to one. I think it speaks volumes, and my, you know, my son is so excited, he has what it needs. I said, Miss Daley will be there more often, so can't go wrong with that. So, thank you, thank you for making that decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to close the public. Mr. Copeland, seconded by Ms. Sedone. End meeting adjourned, thank you all.